I will, I will send everybody, or Kevin and Tom and we'll have one here with Kelly. The current maps that they've lined out, pulled them together, how would be set both the Senate, Rep, the House of Representatives and the State Senate and the State House Representatives. All are going to be different. So we'll stay tuned on that. My, my voice was, don't throw us in with a big town. You gotta make sure that the, even if they did, let's, let's populate it with a bunch of small counties to help balance the population vote out as opposed to just pure numbers. So, and I, Kathy Garcia, I talked to her and she, she hadn't been involved in these until now, so, which surprised me. Okay, um, the AWAS has been certified, the FCC finally certified it and it'll be coming online functionally automatically starting in about two to three weeks. Depends on, it's already been done, all paperwork's out of the way. The next step is for us to sign and I will, I sent the, there's a contract, a maintenance contract was part of the process with the grant and the build by AWI and, and with the process and the contract is a five-year contract that came with it. We have, we all qualify as a rural county, small county. For the maintenance, I think the maintenance cost is forty-three hundred bucks, we have to pay ten percent, meaning the airport does. And I talked to, I gave that note to both Lynn and, and Brian and Bob McDonald. So they'll have to budget that in their programs as well as an eight hundred dollar cost per year for the maintenance of the electronics. Some other piece of, so total over to the county will be about twelve hundred bucks a year to operate that and maintain it for the next five years. So that's the contract. So that's good news. And then heard you talking to this, with the county, you're doing a great job, by the way, you haven't been out on the roads and seen what they're doing to the roads down the bottom of the valley right now, where they're concentrating, putting new shoulders on Macy, the foreign school field colony. Doing a great job and then I suspect the next step, next year will be, uh, Chip Seale, um, again, it's looking a lot better, filling all the potholes. And ideally, I did talk to Bob McDonald, it would be nice if they would, when you heard you talking to, if they would put the same fittings on tractor out the airport so when they get it back, they can use it. Would be good. And what they asked is up to borrow the airport sweeper to go down to Wetmore and you can explain the need there because the old broom is dangerous. And they're gonna have to budget for that.
Yeah, they're, uh, have a broom that will fit on our, that skid steer there at Roden Bridge, say our, but there's, uh, and rather than taking that old, old broom down there, uh, and that, uh, that engine on it is pretty nasty to fire up even and, and to take it that far. It's kind of asshole, a lot easier to throw that skid steer on a trailer and go down with it and sweep those roads down there because they're getting ready to patch there on Thursday.
Okay. Sounds like, okay, that's all I had. I do have something to say and I'll say it, I'll wait to the end of the meeting, I have another item that I want to make public and I'll do that. I want to get into the agenda here and then, you know, make a quick statement for everybody. So with that, how about the attorney?
Just a few things to talk about. We have two judgments, I got two judgments on planning and zoning issues, one last year against Jim McMahon, that one's still out there. I'm talking to the back of Barbie's head here, but.
It's okay, I see her lips moving there, it sounds like she's got a deeper voice.
And one was against Jim McMahon last year, he's been promising he's going to pay a little over seventeen hundred dollars, we haven't seen any money yet. I have another judgment I got on December twentieth of last year against an individual named Luke George down in Centennial Ranch. He was the one that, that his method of disclosing it seemed wasted more efficient than putting a subject system. We got a judgment including a civil penalty of a thousand dollars. And he did go ahead and get the subject system installed finally a couple of months ago, but does not seem interested in responding at all to the kind of payoff at a thousand dollars. So I got a transcript of judgment from the court and then I recorded that with Kelly's office. And that places a lien on his property, saying I already have a lien on Jim McMahon's property, but I put a lien on George's property there, I will. I guess I've already filed it, so it's there. And I'm going to start playing hardball with him and remind him that there was a thousand dollars for the initial penalty and accrued at a hundred dollars per day for every day the violation continued after the date of the judgment. So theoretically, I could, you know, ding him for another twenty thousand dollars roughly, which obviously would be an absolute last resort if we want him to own a lot of Centennial Ranch. Otherwise, I'm just, you know, going after him to tell him he needs to work on a payment arrangement or jive up to try to get that to the general or something. But with that lien, the property's tied up, you know, can't sell it or announce until that lien is stayed there, so. And probably get our money, but maybe.
Okay.
So, um, the, I just got a notice a couple of days ago, the state of Colorado is getting about four hundred million dollars as its share of a twenty-six billion dollar settlement against some big farmer company.
How much was it?
Well, the state's getting four hundred million out of twenty-six billion for the entire country. This is the settlement against Johnson and Johnson, some of the other, you know, and some of the other pharmaceutical companies for opioid, opioids in the way they promoted it and sold it and everything. There's already been a formula worked for all of the counties. I've looked at it, I still, I, I don't have a dollar amount for how much we're going to get down here. We're in, they have different categories and we're in category, different, a region. And actually, the region we're in is the same as our judicial district, our county, H A P County, Freeman County, Freeman County is customer county. But I don't know what this is going to translate to in dollars, but there will be some money coming from that sooner or later, hopefully.
Don't all win, don't get them.
No, I don't, I don't have the data on that. I got a call last week from a deputy district attorney named Chip, and I forgot his last name now. And I, I talked to Barbie on this because that sheriff's vehicle that was totaled, I guess, back in twenty nineteen, CTSI paid for it. I really wasn't aware of any of this, but, you know, he pleaded guilty to the driver that was responsible for the accident total in this sheriff's vehicle. Pleaded guilty and they had a restitution year in schedule. And the sheriff's office feels that there's still ten thousand dollars owed or in the above, but CTSI, CTSI paid. And I don't know that anybody's ever made a claim against the driver's insurance company. In fact, it was the defendant's driver. I mean, excuse me, the defendant's attorney who brought up to Mike Alpin, you really ought to make a claim, this guy had very good insurance.
Absolutely.
So I asked Barbie to talk to CTSI and see what their position is, because they paid a forty thousand on this in the sheriff's office, thinks they need another, you know, out of pocket, another ten thousand, those are just random numbers. So I'm going to work on that and try to get this resolved. And if CTSI wants to get reimbursed, which it should, if they know, then they, we can pursue both claims together as part of restitution by going after the insurance company. So I'll be working on that.
Do you have a date of that hearing?
Uh, I think it was continued to around the end of September, it was, well, September thirtieth or something like that. Bobby, the next time it comes up, we'll share all the information. Well, before then, if I need to make a formal claim against the driver's insurance company, I, Mike Alpin said it was also once we get a claim and, uh, we can start the wheels rolling on that, hopefully. I don't know why CTSI would not have received, that's the normal procedure.
Yeah, why wouldn't they want to claim it?
Yeah, I, I mean, that would be the usual thing if you're, if your vehicle gets totaled or something, your insurance company pays you for it. An insurance company settles up for the other insurance company and that's generally done pretty much automatically. Maybe that's, I mean, CTSI, our CTSI is going to handle this, but we might be able to get, it might be ten thousand dollars or so to fully make the sheriff's department whole on that vehicle. And it's not on the agenda today, it was going to be, but it continued this aura. Subcisenized adoption policy that I've read over, I'm wondering why it was supposed to get into business before the county commissioners of approving an adoption policy. I don't see it anywhere in your duties. We'll talk about that when it comes up.
She should know, I mean, I'll be in some statute somewhere, county's work policy or something, can imagine one.
I, I don't know, I don't recall, I don't think we've ever done that before that I remember, so we'll see what it's all about. That's all I had to talk about today.
Okay, thanks. How about you, madams admin?
I do have something to talk about, um, regarding grants. I couldn't find a policy or guidelines or anything determining, um, if, if there's a grant that is available for people to apply for and it's not a matching grant versus one that is, requires a matching grant. When B O C C has to give permission to go after that grant? Does that mean that if there, if it has to have matching brands, then the B O C C has to approve it? Or if there's no matching grant and it's just, or no matching money, if it's just a grant, they don't have to get matched money? Can they just apply for it? Do all grants have to go through the B O C C?
Let me give you my thought. Yes, and the reason would be because it could affect us, whatever they're doing liability wise. And usually those grants want to sponsor from the county and endorsement that says it's a good thing to have. So that would be something that we would want to consider whether it is, could be a grant to do something really goofy, we wouldn't want to put our reputation on the line or liability. My thought on it. Other thoughts? Why would they, you know, we don't stop anybody else that's out there in another entity going after grants on their own with a company or another, uh, like San Isabel, they wanted to go after a grant themselves, different story. But if it requires a county endorsement, it would certainly. Charles, again.
I, I would also think if it was like the Taino, Taino Housing Board or the Tourism Board, that's a county function.
Right.
That would be appropriate for the B O C C to.
It affects the county and we actually are accountable for them as well, the money, all that, my thoughts. Ken?
I think probably what brought this up is one of them that's on the agenda today on that gray and black grant. Because it's, it's a, it's just a straight-up grant and they have to bring it to us whereas.
Deputy Sheriff.
Why couldn't they have just one?
Under Sheriff.
We have signed for it.
Yeah, we have to sign or we have to sponsor. We did it before.
And so we're going to have a few terms.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks for asking, and I'm glad, thank you for grabbing a hold and making sure all the grants are catalog logged. And keep reminding us that you've copied on the stuff. And I will, as soon as that contract with the AWAS is there, you'll be the copy then, so. Hey, good. All right, any comments, public comments, now that we've had a few of them that we're going to put on other agendas? If anybody else has a comment to bring up some other item or something that's of concern? Or a good thing like how great the county is doing on the road repair would be good to know. All right, I don't hear any, so let's move down this agenda. It's nine forty now, so we're moving along. The unfinished business, Tom?
Motion.
Ken?
No, sure.
I don't have any either. New business, item number one is consideration of approving payroll and signing checks. All these will be allowed to have a public comment on if there's a motion to do it. And then second, so, uh, are we going to approve the payroll?
I would move, we approve the out-of-cycle checks. And you've got a four thousand two hundred fifty-eight dollars and fifteen cents.
Thanks, Charles. Four thousand two hundred and what was it?
Forty-two fifty-eight fifteen.
Case been moved in second to approve the out-of-cycles checks. No, Kevin, then.
I've got copies.
Okay, any other comment?
Well, I was encouraged that the out-of-cycle check numbers had sort of gone down. That's nice. We're out of the hundred thousand dollar out-of-cycle.
Yeah.
Yeah. Deals, so.
Thanks to Barbie.
Timing is impeccable and she just.
Be tracked, she didn't want to hear it.
Yeah. Yeah, I was encouraged that to see we're getting that trimmed down and, and that must mean massaging that whole thing to kind of bring everybody in line about payroll cycles, so.
Any other comments?
Oh, I'm, I'm pretty happy to see it was a very short list as well.
Yeah, I'll echo that and the budget too. Thanks for doing a good job. As we roll into this, one thing that came to my attention on this conversion that was odd is some people misunderstood when we said the county employees received an extra check, money in their account, you probably heard that. And so it's just the way people hear things. There, we're not giving anybody extra money, we're giving it back over time. And we had several meetings, so any chance you get to, to do, maybe it's a PR thing, you know, tidbit, did you know? We got a new system, did you know it took us to, us some money, we had to, however you want to do it, always good to keep public informed. Thanks. Any other comments? All in favor of approving the payroll and signing checks, say aye. Tom?
Well.
Oh, excuse me, no checks.
Out-of-cycle check.
Out-of-cycle checks, I'm sorry, payroll, out-of-cycle.
Had nothing to do with payroll, just out-of-cycle check.
Yeah, I know, I don't know why it has payroll in there, but I just read. All papers, say aye, Tom.
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Ken, aye. Okay, next item, consideration of fire mitig.
Well, no, the black and gray, I'm, I'm jumping down.
We're still on payroll now, yeah, I think.
It's, uh, I don't know, I don't see that.
We have three different items on the payroll and out-of-cycle.
I don't see that. How do you see that?
We need to do accounts payable.
Is.
We have accounts payable.
It's part of this first item.
Yes.
Okay, that's okay with me. I'm just, I'm just reading what's on, on the print, sorry. Okay, so what's up next in accounts payable?
I would move that we approve the accounts payable. And let me get to the bottom of this here. For a total of three hundred and fifty-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Okay, case been moved in second to prove the accounts payable and amount of four thousand, four hundred and fifty-three thousand, what was it, four hundred and sixty?
Three hundred and fifty-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight eighty-seven.
Any comments? And all in favor, say aye, Tom.
Aye.
Ken, aye.
Aye.
Okay, so then, what was the last item?
It'd be the payroll.
It's not an action item.
Okay, sorry about that.
That it?
All right. You don't tell me anything.
Yeah.
Proved a line, you have to do that or is that?
No, when I talked to Sam about, Sam, the auditor for.
Darnado.
That, yes, he had mentioned that they go back to the minutes, you see it actually through the minutes, so the signature to it is, and then.
Well, I may have misspoken and we historically, we have not approved payroll separately.
I don't believe.
Actually, usually in your motion, when we still had vouchers, you would say approve the vouchers of the payroll. And then you've been saying invoices and payroll. So.
Yeah, this is only the second payroll report we've received since I've been a commissioner, so.
Right.
We.
That's just for our info and your view because.
Yes, because it's, should be included within, they were reviewing that's paid.
That makes sense, the way I understand it, you all can't say no to the payroll, so. That'd be crazy.
I actually included it, the payroll figure in the minutes last month because, yeah.
Right, right. Yeah, I always thought it was strange when I saw the payroll report.
Yeah.
I had no idea, but I don't know if we have a feeling for that, should we have a motion to approve the payroll as reported or?
Probably always better to air inside of the cross sheet, everything, it's questioned by motion or vote.
Because truly, payroll is not part of the accounts payable document that we approved, right? It's not in that.
We actually had that discussion yesterday.
Yeah, so I would move we approve the payroll report as provided. I give you that amount, Kelly, if you needed, three, twelve, six, fifty-two, forty-seven.
And it's, uh, the amount on the left.
Yeah, that include, what I gave you includes social security, you don't want that. Okay, so then it's two ninety-five, four sixty-four, ninety.
So just so everyone's aware, kind of that conversation Kelly and you have, and how the two reports interact with each other. The gross wages is not included in the actual AP report, the social security is.
Is, okay, that's why we're separating out. Social security was seventeen, what, seven fifty-seven.
Second motion, okay, it's been moved in second to accept or to approve the payroll. It's going to be with that, but what, what were you going to say? Why did Darnado didn't think we had to do?
With, from what I understand, we used to, you all used to sign AP report or AP agent and it just looks the minutes. So it's like an extra step that we could eliminate, we don't need to keep a stack of pages somewhere.
Yeah, okay.
And this way it will be in the minutes officially.
Yeah. Okay, makes sense. All in favor, say aye, Kevin.
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Ken, aye. And now can we move to item two?
Yes.
Is that okay? Great.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you for the report. All right, let's consider the gray and black marijuana grant. Who wants to bring that on to the floor?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Under Sheriff Robert Hill basically needs your approval for him to submit a request for a grant which is no matching funds for the gray and black marijuana grant. If you approve him submitting that, then he will go ahead and enter it. He has no idea how much money they'll get, it's just whatever.
And, and for the record, what's it for?
It is for money to be spent on anything that they tie to illegal marijuana investigations.
Pass, so. It's been moved in second, not you, who would like to move? I'll move that we accept and approve the gray and black marijuana grant as submitted by under Sheriff Hill.
Second.
Now it's been moved in second. Any other discussion?
It looks like that grant's going to be around the eighteen thousand dollar mark, which is down to the past, but based on what they're not going to know until they actually get it, get it submitted, so.
Looks like that's all I got.
Yeah, it's a competitive grant, so I'm sure it's based on how much money the state allocated versus how many requests they have.
Yeah. Comments, anybody else? And all in favor, say aye, Tom.
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Ken, aye. Okay, next item up, it's like our illustrious OEM is on the gap for consideration of fire mitigation contractor, opening a bid.
Uh, we just gave the bids. Sorry, I am back here. Hello, I am not your OEM.
No, but you're not, but I know you're parting it up and when I hear fire, I think OEM and you.
You have two good hands.
You can't be arrowing. One of theirs up.
That was low.
I, yeah.
And I say she has two hands.
Oh, I just got it, I just got it.
I'm surprised you.
Actually.
Um, okay, so I just handed the bids to Clint. Um, I don't know the process, do you want to open them?
You know, I'm not sure to my job description that you had in my pocket.
They will have to pay you extra for the things.
And for the record, get over, where did you get those grants?
Grants?
I mean the bids.
They were submitted to Tina.
Which is how they were supposed to be. Yeah, I just want to make that clear that they didn't go to you.
Oh, yeah, no, we followed that purchasing process, so.
With your permission, I'll open the bids up. First one is, I just hear a note on the outside, team, from H and H Forestry. Somebody can do the drum roll on it.
I love it when a plan, I love it when a plan comes through.
Always pathetic, the request for the drum roll. Yeah, they're legal counts.
Yeah.
Okay. You guys are full of it.
This is from H and H, H and H Forestry, proposal for services. On this project experience references, team members. Both pages. Second page, this is out of a beta, Colorado, this is located. The total amount, it's broken down, it's categorized by properties, but the total amount is fifty-five thousand five hundred thirty-one dollars eighty-five cents.
How many acres? That slipped me.
Uh, it's.
Or is it not based on?
It's based on.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it lists airport road, White Cave Road, Johnny Road, Arapua, I mean, there's a number of roads listed.
There's thirteen.
Thirteen properties that they were, okay, so fifty-five thousand five hundred thirty-one dollars eighty-five cents and then they're actually yeah, four copies of this one, which I'll hand up to you in just a second. The other one I have is from Ace Tree here. The other one I have is from Ace Tree Care. Ace Tree Care Incorporated out of Littleton, Colorado. And there's a cover letter addressed to private homeowners. And explains what they intend to do, if they did the bid, signed by a person named Griff Gearing, president and team member. That's a lot of other information here, which I'm not going to read. This one also breaks it down and does say that here as of August seventeen, twenty twenty-one, we can start on her before November fifteen and complete the jobs by December one, twenty twenty-one. Depending on whether it is good to work in and we are free from breakdowns and totally related delays. And they have broken down price for each property. The total on this is twenty-nine thousand, two hundred ninety dollars. And again, there are individual copies for each of these.
And there are four and their completion dates again.
Uh, that one was, I think I said December fifteenth.
November fourteenth.
December sixth.
December second.
All right, start on her before November fifteen, complete jobs by December one. Winter, so this would seem to anybody else.
No, he's already shaking their hand. Welcome to the, in the interval.
And both were bidding on the same scope of work.
Yes.
This is all we got.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah.
Three copies of each, so each, it's a copy of.
On the criteria, was it best value, how did they, how was it presented in the contract? It, or RFP?
Best value is in your purchasing policy, which looks at costs, local contractors and a couple of factors, skills, preferences. I might be reaching here, but I know that.
It'll get sound like you know you're talking about, don't ever apologize.
Okay. Um, and in the RFP, we did, uh, you know, we placed that description in there, um, so.
Quite spread here.
Yeah.
Consider best value to us. We need time to think about that, or are you going to make a case today?
Uh, we feel comfortable making a recommendation if you guys want that.
Based on what you haven't seen the price yet?
Uh, well, we, we have the price here. The fifty-five versus the twenty-nine.
Okay.
Um.
We're the only ones surprised. Okay, all right, go ahead, I move.
Did you, did you have a recommendation?
Let's talk, let's, oh, okay. Do you want to propose it and let us vote on your recommendation, or do you want us to make a motion beforehand? Go ahead, give us a discussion.
Okay, um, so the first one, the fifty-five, we feel is really, really high. Uh, we did work with H and H last year, um, so, um, yes, they were a big company, but that came in high. And then Ace had an acceptable price bid, but the RFP called out a completion date of October fifteenth. Um, and they can't even start till a month later, so.
Can they finish when you want them finished?
Um, we wanted them done by October fifteenth, so we would have liked to have them mobilized maybe next week, two weeks, and then complete by middle of October.
So they failed to meet the criteria, so there's no choice, that's what you're saying?
Talk to me about that.
Um, no.
I didn't read in there whether H and H said when they could start or when they could.
I didn't see any.
Yeah. No, I don't know. I could follow up.
In theory, they, this is supposed to be based on the criteria, so it would include that thing.
Correct.
And you're willing to pull the plug and not do it at all versus doing it later than your proposed date?
Um, yes. This round of project is, is there's like five trees on some properties, um, and so just discussing, is that impactful? You know, will that protect in a fire kind of consideration?
Seems like a lot of money.
Some of them really do need it, so that's the other thing. So I know I'm giving contradictory information, but overall, the commitment of funds we're concerned about, so.
I'll say it. It's been moved in second and to reject both these bids. Let's discuss why.
Well, I made a motion, one, because of the recommendation from one of your folks, secondly, neither bid was submitted to do the work within the timeline that was requested in order. And I think the money's way high, by the way. The work that needs to be done. I bet you would go hire somebody to do it for twelve, thirteen grand easy.
That probably, I mean, if somebody thinks they can come down from Denver and do it for that money, mobilize down here, somebody local ought to be able to do it for less.
See if he wasn't interested. Colorado, Colorado.
I never heard from them, and these were the only two bidders that were, so.
So other thoughts, because.
Did you get a second to that motion or?
Yes.
Oh.
Um, you know, H and H is good, but I just am unsure. We have thirty-four thousand dollars that we committed to the project, kind of looking at what would the homeowners have to pay in that remainder? I don't know that they could have protected something.
Well, you know, just thinking about it, seems to me homeowners are responsible.
Correct.
Period. And they ought to not just be sitting there waiting for us to hand them money or the government or somebody to protect their own house, basically. And why in the world wouldn't they want to get out there and try to make a buck with their timber? So you have some local people bid on it. Hey, and we take it on and let them put some skin in the game, let us, I know you guys, what would you do? You'd go on the, from a grant point of view, would help them and advise them and help tell them what is the best process or procedure. Is that sort of what you're thinking?
Well, technical advice for sure, right? Um, and we do have some partners who are able to provide larger cost funds, so we've been curious, what is the goal of the commissions with this money? Because, uh, you know, we want it to be impactful. Is giving people money appropriate? Is it developing some sort of system like the weed cost share program? Uh, it just feels like there's perhaps better ways.
Sure, education.
Education.
Yeah, to find a porch of, somebody had bought into a place that has a lot of timber on it. And I never have been working in a place like that or living in a place. I can be nice to have some advice. It would be nice to have somebody you can lean on, it'd be nice to have somebody say, go find a saw mill that can take the timber and I'll make some money on it. Or gone, I think to me, that would be a great use of money for you to use with your team of people. As opposed to just giving them money or move to find out contractor and we'll be accountable for all the execution of that contract, it's kind of crazy.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
I agree, seems to me.
There's a process to set up.
Yeah.
It's going to circumvent that. H and H did a great job on the last project. I think they completed with the scope of the contract, but when you look at the number of actual trees that need to be removed.
Yeah, that's a great point, maybe, maybe that's what you do. You go back, think about what you just said, come back to us at some time and give us the process you think you would like us to consider. How to help people without just saying, don't worry, well, the county's here to save you. But I want to help them.
Well, the other side of the coin is really not going to be your job to do any of this.
Yeah.
She's.
As you wrote in.
Agreed to.
I think, I know it's a few years ago. So here I am today. Still new.
I'm only looking at it because you're here now.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, I like this stuff, but, um, you know, I'm not a county employee, so I don't know, I should be.
Well, you are.
County.
Part-time. Come on, we're paying some of your salary.
You do pay some, I said, correct.
Correct, can't dodge it.
Even like to, like just do a reassessment of the program. We'll come back to you folks with a recommendation that will be thank we're to best, we're best for county.
When would you like to come back? But we haven't updated yet.
Two thousand and twenty-one or twenty-two.
You're mighty brave.
Yeah, I tell you what.
Yes, I've got to remember. So I would say, let us come back with a better program in two thousand and twenty-two and we'll make some.
Make some money and make some money.
You know, I think whenever we had, if this particular project was scoped out at five to seven hundred trees or whatever, then maybe we go through that whole process. If it's twenty-nine trees and we can call Braden and say, hey, dude, you want to make some extra money here, what you got to do?
Change it on, oil it up.
You know, I mean, I think there are people that go out there and do that, if nothing else but the firewood. There's not enough board footage involved to deal with worrying about in this particular example, that I think maybe. The problem is disposal of chipping and removal and all that is not just cutting firewood and leaving all the limbs there, but uh, I just think.
You look at total acreage, like if you look at total acres treated, treatable acres, it's less than twenty.
Yeah.
And that's a pretty substantial amount.
Right, and, and I don't look at it as treatable acres on this particular budget, because it's just not enough trees. They've already flagged trees, so.
They had twenty-nine trees.
Well, I don't know that exact number, I made that number up as an example, but I just, I think this is a classic case where government answered it.
Right.
There's probably more efficient ways to handle smaller projects. I'm not talking about the big project, but if the objective is to go in and remove X number of trees, anybody with any common sense would look at this project and say, well, it's not worth fifty-five thousand dollars.
Now, that's where I'm at.
I think I'd be more inclined to say something on this scale. If we visited about it before, if the county would be able to provide, if they did their work and we would be able to provide a chipper and have them bring that stuff in, be chipped or something like that, would actually be as beneficial. I'd like to look at something like that moving ahead, the accounting case as well.
You know, I'm truly going to go on this particular project, like, because that's what we're talking about today, is spilling X number of trees and removing them and chipping the debris and leaving the chip in place.
In some cases, each homeowner was allowed to sacrifice.
And then that's the other side of that coin is the homeowners are willing to kick in some. But let go basically, whatever you need to pare down, you know, these numbers in my opinion. Yeah, I think it's want reconsideration looking at that.
I agree, my, uh, I grew up as a saw miller. I cut trees, I ran the saw mill, I was out there picking trees. Even a big project, if a landowner had that and understood the value of that to them, why would he give it away to somebody that's going to charge us fifty-five thousand bucks? It was a big project and then make more money on what he takes out and the landowner standing there thinking he got a deal. There's lots of ways to handle them, that's why I think a program, I don't have, I'm not telling you how to do it, but to come back and give advice to landowners, there's a lot of little landowners that would like to pool together, maybe that would be the, you know, lots of ways to handle. Especially this fire mitigation grants are all over the place, right? No, my brother still is in that business doing. So I, I agree, we don't need to give money away and have it be wasted, I think.
Was county owner chipper?
No, that'd be one thing I would like to look at in the future.
Might be worth having, just clearing Garbar pits, um.
I guess I'm just, does this have any impact on how we title three? I don't know.
We're not obligated to expend those dollars, so.
Use it to what makes sense.
You know, maybe we go back to quarter three and say, hey, if you guys want to find a private contractor, come in, do what you want to do. We can go back to commissioners and ask for some financial assistance. Something money's for.
Yeah. That was like a plan, guys come back to us, so.
There's a motion on the floor.
So.
Reject.
Right, so it's been moved in second to reject the bids, all in favor, say aye, Tom.
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
And aye.
And you want to represent us and notify them, or you want us to do that?
I can do that, however, I will, if they have any follow-up questions, I will direct them to you. Yeah, no, no, it's just if they raise.
Yeah, and I'm comfortable with you citing the reasons why the motion passed.
Yeah.
Even at least the ones I gave.
Yeah.
If you want to pass those on.
Too expensive and you didn't meet the criteria.
And that's what we do overall.
Neither one of them, yes. My scroll on. Your condolences to the group out.
That'll be a funny.
I'll stay out of that.
Oh, no.
Thank you guys for the work you did.
Thanks a lot.
Even though we turned it down.
That's all right. Thank you.
Okay. Jackie's here, I saw her. I, I didn't hear her this time, but I saw her. Okay. All right, let's consider approval process for the short-term rental permit. And Jackie, why don't you present that and then we'll see.
Well, I'm the one that asked to put it on the agenda.
Oh, you did, I didn't know that. Who put it on the agenda?
Well, I asked you. So we, we have an issue here. We are circumventing the zoning resolution, we're out of compliance as commissioners with the zoning resolution. When we voted to authorize the chairman to sign the short-term rental applications instead of bringing them to the full board, section nine, uh, ten-three F says that the VOCC shall review the applications and accompanying evidence before taking action on the application. The VOCC shall grant, deny or modify the application as indicated in the notice. I believe that we need to as a VOCC hear these applications and not have the chairman of the VOCC automatically sign it.
Okay.
If I may.
You go ahead.
And correct me if I'm wrong. I believe our discussions were that is the case on any new applications, and then we voted on the ones that are existing coming before us as they are re-upping and getting in line, we voted that she would be able to sign those, is that correct?
Well, I don't remember the exact language, we did vote to do that, and I'm saying, I think we were. out of compliance with the resolution when we did that. Now, they're all new applications. There's no reupping. They're existing as, they're existing short term rentals, but they're all new applications.
Well, we said we'd grandfathered them as well. I can get them back to line, so, but Jackie, tell us.
So when the motion was made, the motion, if I'm correct, the motion was made to just have the chairman of the board of county commissioners go ahead and sign all the short term rentals. Then that was done June thirtieth. So all my letters that are going out state that this was approved June thirtieth. But if you look on page seventy one in your zoning and even under the STR, that's not how it's done. So then Kelly and I brought it up again and it failed. So now we're bringing it up for the third time. This time, page seventy three, and I marked them. And seventy one. And then you go back to what Tom said, and Tom is correct. You're circumventing the zoning resolution. We have maybe three to six applicants meeting. It would be helpful. It'll take me about a minute to get on the agenda and say, these are the applicants, and then we need your approval. Then I can put that on their letter. As stands now, the letters that have been going out say they were all approved on June thirtieth, so it doesn't even look right.
Not right.
And so I have three right now that needs to be signed by Mr. Canada that say June thirtieth. Because that's when you guys made the motion. So go ahead and allow the chairman of the board just to blanket, sign all these. That's not what we're doing anymore.
Get ourselves in.
That's fair enough.
We're not.
So hope the process is talk about the process. It's, it's a recommendation coming to us, approve or disapprove. You're going to have some, maybe you'll disapprove or somewhere. And then you would present those to us at some meeting, two or three at a time, or we'll have a meeting again.
Yeah, it'll take about a minute because if there's any that, like we postponed one that was out of compliance, and then we did one that did not need it. So what I'm saying, these are already approved, but they got the data June thirtieth on it.
So you, right, I hear that, but before we straighten that up. So the process is clear. Uh, uh, if you read through the regs, is that true? What your, your process you're recommending to us now is something we should have done before voting on the wrong thing in the first book?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure. So it's all there. So, all right, so that's that. How do we handle the, the ones that think they've got one on June thirtieth? We have to.
You know, I don't, I don't believe so because your motion is still on the table and you guys granted that, but you might have to ask. Because right now I have three of them that need to be signed that was done so that I can get them recorded. And it'll still say, or four, it still says June thirtieth, but I think from this moment on, starting with our next round, which is the thirteenth of September.
We ought to.
Definitely better start right.
Well, I've got a couple of issues, but go ahead.
And Jackie, I was thinking that when we looked, when I looked at those minutes, there wasn't an actual guys didn't make an actual motion to approve these and just let Kell sign them.
We didn't.
I thought we did, but.
Clint, what do you think? You've been listening to this. What have we got?
I'm going to just speak on this. I didn't know this was going to be discussed.
Bottom line is, are they operating now?
Correct. All the ones.
These are old ones that were there and you're.
Reapply. Now, the, the ones where they reup, we could, we decided in our regs that we could do that in house, but all the new ones have to be.
The ones we were, we were allowing.
No reupping.
Use a different term.
They're all brand new. That was my point.
Okay.
Right.
Let me use another word.
The word is you didn't shut them down to make them real.
Okay, so I already got a short term rental. Now I have to come in and get it another way for two hundred bucks. Those we could do in house. It's the first round that the board of county commissioners have got to look at and sign. And a first time applicant. Correct. Yes.
Yeah, the June thirtieth minutes.
I think that was when you did find approval of the.
Resolution.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we also set the deadline of November eleventh. So I don't believe there is a motion to rescind. I just think we need, personally, I think we need to reestablish how we're going to do this. I don't agree with the June thirtieth date came on these three applications because it's not true. And if we ever have to go to court or re-learn the document to say, what day did you guys vote on that? And we said June thirtieth. That is not going to be asked.
What harm is there not doing that? Why can't we look at and sign before? Three of the ones in here. It's not going to stop them.
This is my idea.
Well, the date's wrong.
That's why I mean, fix the date and redo it, but what harm is?
Oh, I see what you're saying. My letters now.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
No reason to have that.
So if we're going to use today's date on these letters, then you're going to have to look at the ones for the short term rentals right now. And it's on the agenda. Well, you got a discussion.
Well, you could do.
It's on the agenda to.
It's on.
To consider these.
Okay, then let's consider these.
Well, we're not there yet. And the dates wrong.
I'll fix the date.
So my suggestion is that we follow zoning resolution. It doesn't matter how many there are, and it doesn't matter how long it takes. If it takes one minute, great. If it takes thirty minutes, that's what it takes. We're supposed to look at all the documentation and hear their recommendation.
And you can bring the recommendation to us. So you're going to bring this recommendation to us. Go fix them.
Okay, can I?
What?
Fix the date and then you guys look at them next Tuesday?
I'm okay with considering today, but.
Okay, consider.
They're already on here today, and that's okay.
Okay.
Just because we got a, a, a technical administrative problem, that's okay. Thanks.
We need to come to consensus on how we're going to handle it. That's my hope before we handle it. Let's decide how we're going to handle it.
As to your point a minute ago, we didn't have the influx that we thought we would have. Anyhow, I think everybody's waiting or something. I don't know. She hasn't been inundated with people so trying to come in line, so. And I'm not seeing where we made a motion to that effect.
I didn't hear. So, so personally, Tom, here's, here's my view, Kevin. I don't, it's in the regs. It's here. We have to look at. Get a date and, and we, and we erroneously had, had you start down the path. It's easy to fix it. We haven't proved anything yet. It's not going to change them not having a short term rental already because they weren't in business. Is that right? So if you want, it's on the agenda. You got time to fix it. We're going to take a break here. And we can, your cup, when is that resolution?
Can't you just?
We can move it.
Approve them with me changing the date?
Yes.
And then, well, then why don't you just look them now and approve it with me changing the date and come over to my office and I'll reprint the letters. It's going to take me a little while.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I have an issue with that. Do, Clint, do you think we need a motion to officially approve the other short term rentals that we've looked, that's been signed on?
Yeah, it needs to be consistent for.
Right.
I mean, we'd be hung out to dry if something ever.
How many have you approved already?
You signed them, correct?
No, well, I was, there was three. That was, yeah. There was three.
Do you remember the date of that meeting, Jackie? By its own. Remember the date of that meeting that they came from, Jackie?
Kelly does because we had to record it in place. She's, she's hanging me out to dry.
Understood, easily understand. But my question stands. Do you remember the date that those meetings came?
The twenty second of.
July?
July because.
Yeah.
Is what the date was on those letters. I remember enough to look. I think that was the one that you said we're recording them before it was approved.
I guess my question still stands. Do you remember the date of the planning and zoning meeting? When you considered those? I'm looking for it. I just haven't found it yet.
The past.
Was the twenty first?
Yeah.
It was the.
Had to have been before the twenty second most likely, huh?
It's on a Monday. All our meetings are on Mondays.
I remember the date, but. And the reason I'm asking is I'm prepared to make a motion to go back and approve the recommendations of the planning commission on that date for that number of short term rentals.
Do you want me to go look and see?
Well, I can't find it for some reason.
Tina, do you have the letters? You've got it in your computer there, don't you? The ones that.
I don't know if she would.
Why would she?
She had them printed out.
No, I gave them to her to have you sign.
Well, I thought she had them to have.
No.
Got them electronic. Kelly.
I just.
Kelly's going to look at the date again.
I don't know why I don't have it written down, but I don't. I'm sorry.
So Kelly, go look at the date.
Don't you think that would be reasonable, Clint, to go back and formally approve? Because that's all we've had, correct? There's been one round. This was the second round.
Jackie, in July nineteen.
Recommendation.
There was a planning zoning STR hearing in the courtroom.
Okay, that might have been.
On the nineteen. Okay, which is a Monday. I just didn't have it written.
And there was also one on the twelve.
I think it was the nineteen.
No, the twelve was S U P hearing. So the STR was on the nineteen.
We'll have it confirmed.
Would the letters be affecting that date then?
Will be the again, it's just my opinion, but they, they, they would be affected the day we vote on.
Correct.
We could include in a motion because they may already be operating, right?
Yes. The letters already left our.
Right. To approve that in arrears, but the date of approval, the day today we voted on it.
Here's where the lawyer comes in. None pro tunc.
But I was just going to say, you always steal my thunder.
Oh, was that again?
None pro. Now for them. You sign it now, but it's effective back then.
Let's challenge you and see if you can spell that.
See, in my world, that's retroactive.
In my world, I'm screwed up.
You don't like to use none pro tunc unless you get a lottery.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's why you take that big money to cry out about.
I think it's a stop.
Yeah.
It's, it's three words. N U N C.
Pro.
Tunc.
And tunc, T U N C.
Wanted to be ruled by.
Okay, so let's get moving. What are you going to do now, Jackie? You're going to go, she's got the dates there, probably the nineteen or whatever's on them. It's fine, Kelly.
There's nine, but some of these we did twice because we corrected them that one time.
So sin shall be exposed somewhere along the line. What she tried to be?
Only five.
I know. Four in concept, but.
What do you have?
Five or nine. But when you redo these letters or signature, but it should say add today's date, none pro tunc to that, to that, back to that, the date that.
You missed that whole educational lesson today.
Jim, if you're listening to my legal advice.
Okay, so how many are there?
This one says July sixth. This one was done correctly. It's where it says June thirtieth. Jim, show me how many needs to pass.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh, how many are there?
There'll be weeks of fallout internally over this.
I'm glad you.
You may, Jackie, for your recording fee.
I should. Uh, let's see. I think my colored copies are more than that recording fee.
All right.
Oh. Bear, which we're considering today.
Because I had it wrong. This one had to be re-recorded to correct the date. We have to go back to the June thirtieth. And valid?
It's functioning.
So that's the five. And here. And then these three with the correct date, right?
Those are today's.
Yes.
Are we in agreement by consent that we will move forward differently now? There's no motion to rescind according to the minutes, so.
And we aren't going to follow what we should have been.
So feeling, I guess, if perchance we could get the documentation beforehand so we have a chance to look at it before our meetings.
Thank you very much. You're going to gather up several.
So we don't have to go through it while we're waiting here.
Right, because some of them are fairly lengthy.
Aren't you getting that? You're getting those packets, aren't you?
No, I see it because I go to those planning and zoning.
Okay.
So you're going to have to put a summary together for us.
That summary is already there for the planning commission.
I know.
So they'll be in your packet. I'll rip off those packages.
Recommend it, and if it's controversial, you go into the.
Encourage you to just scan those and send those to electronically. We don't need those hard copies of that many pages, right? Tina can do that, but there's no reason. Some of those.
Well, no, they're scanned and sent to the planning commission. I'll just include you on the email.
Turn around and look at.
Let's just shoot them to Tina.
What's that mean?
Just show them.
Send anything to us.
Just send it to Tina.
I'll see her.
Okay. All right, all right, let's, let's go on. We got a lot of stuff to still do. What, what we're going to do now is fix the dates on the five ones that are incorrect, correct? That's the way I see it now.
And the date will be today.
Okay, none pro tunc.
So when you when you put for where he's going to sign it. Is there a date or a signature that belongs now?
It's in the body at the first paragraph.
So get the format and.
So we're on to the next item. Or you have a recommendation for us?
The next item, Jackie, is a, is short term.
So I recommend that you approve these, they just hand it to me.
Three?
Three short term rentals based on the planning commission. The septic systems were correct and the amount of rental unit were correct.
Effective today.
Today, please.
And some hints forth, we would, we're not going to do it today. But we would have a packet accompanied.
Be an agenda item. Yeah, Tina will put on.
And I have just a seat at the table every meeting.
Oh, absolutely.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would still expect her to come and make the formal recommendation.
She has to. Comes before the board to approve. So I move, we accept a recommendation to approve the three short term rentals as presented by Jackie from the planning and zoning commission. from the planning and zoning commission before. Whatever.
His name real quick. Counsel, could you just give us the names of those real quick? Well, are these I'm writing out these. Are these
Yeah, yeah, they're gonna correct it. Just tell us the names.
For the record, so we know, okay, Douglas and Leanne Bayer, living trust. Charles and Shelley Taylor. Sean and Saqira Davidson, standard spelling of Saqira. Which she goes by some other three letter name. Has nothing to do with that.
And Lisco Family Revocable Trust. These are the, those are the four. I think we're dealing with the motion on the floor is for the three that were being brought today, not the five that we need to address.
Yeah, here's the five. And that's not one of them.
We'll do it. So how many was there? Did you get three or four? I thought there was three.
We need four.
Yeah.
Okay, so
You have four letters there.
So the motion was to accept the as presented. I said three. It's actually four, uh, short term permit recommendations from the planning and zoning commission. I need a second. Second. It's been moved and seconded. So now is there any discussion? More discussion? Go ahead.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lisco, Bayer, Taylor, and Davidson. Is it David or Davis?
Davis.
Got them, Kelly. And we're gonna have the new, you'll get the actual
We'll deal with these separate. She's gonna redo them.
Okay, let's have a motion for what we want to retroactively nunc pro tunc. No, those are already done. I'm sorry. That's a separate issue. All right.
So you're not gonna be voting on those
No.
Today, are the ones that are gonna be the nunc pro tunc ones?
Absolutely, yes.
Those ones, they just need to change the date. Those white ones need to have pro tunc on them.
Okay, well.
So that's what we've decided.
The ones that you've already issued. It is, may need to make it
We're gonna make it formal today with a motion.
Yeah, and back to the date.
Right.
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 Were those all on June thirtieth?
Yes. So let's get, she stayed with the motion on the floor. Let's approve the ones that is moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye, Kevin.
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Can the aye? So those are taken care of. You're gonna fix the date on those.
And then I would move, there's five of these, right? Let me have a picture for a second, Jackie, so I can make my motion. So I would move that we also should the five applications that were submitted and the letters were sent out on June thirtieth that we approve those today.
And skip Bears. I had to redo Bear.
Okay, Bear is not one of these.
Oh, good.
And those would be Bullard Trust, Blue Acres, Red Tail Properties, Mitchell, and Sun. As they were recommended to us by the planning commission.
Okay, I'll second it. And move the seconded to accept and approve nunc pro tunc back to the date of June thirtieth. The five, uh, applications as read. Any other discussion?
Please, I just wanna know how to just have a little nunc pro tunc.
You, you missed that lesson. N U N C P R O, separate word, tunc, T U N C.
Three words. Nunc pro
Nunc T U N C.
German.
What's my
Okay. All in favor, say aye, Tom.
Aye.
Kevin? Aye, can the aye?
I was remiss, sir, if I may. I meant to ask a question before we voted on any of these. Were there any special conditions so we don't, because we don't have that information in front of us?
No.
Okay.
In the body of the letter, I state how large your septic is and how many they can rent for. So that seems to be a lot of the condition in the body of the letter. And then written complaint.
Which was what was discussed in the planning meeting.
Uh, written complaint basis. So it's basically, these so far have not had any.
If, if there are special conditions, they would show up in the letter as well.
Yes, okay. All right.
Thank you. Yeah, I feel better about this. Someday, I just worry that we're gonna be held to task about our process.
That's good. We're cleaning her up. Yeah. All right, let's take five and then we'll come back and hit Fremont Humane Society.
That's the one I'm
Okay, we're rolling back after a quick recess. It's nine minutes to eleven. And our next item up is the agenda item is consideration of the Humane Society of Fremont County impound agreement for 2022. And who brought this?
It was mailed.
So it was mailed to us to consider. All right, and this is the same, what I understand is we had an agreement in the last, that correct? Looked, it looked the same.
Sure. I move that we accept the agreement with the Humane Society of Fremont County Incorporated as for our impound agreement as presented.
Second. One second, okay, they moved second, except the agreement as per Zenith of the Humane Society of Fremont County impound agreement discussion. From, go ahead, Tom.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to make sure for the record that we and everyone else understands this is an impound agreement, this is for sheltering only. Fremont County does not provide any control of this document, so there was some question about that. And we did talk about it at our web more meeting. I think those folks understood, but I'm not sure everybody does, that's strictly for for the impoundment, starts January one, twenty twenty two, goes to the end of the year.
Good point.
I've never been to that shelter. I have no idea, see the address, but I'm
Years ago. About as sure. Yeah, and like what Tom said, it is an agreement that takes the dogs that have, are a problem. Sheriff has been called to worry about a rabid dog or whatever. It's found in the county and take them down there.
Well, the public can
Public can take a lost dog or, or anybody take a dog, it's just for the impound. Well, then, and the public can take them anywhere, I've had dogs show up and be on the vista. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. Oh, but just for the record, go ahead.
We pay them three hundred and two dollars and sixty seven cents. For an annual, that's the cost of this, I meant to include that.
Sorry, yeah, I probably should have done that.
Good point.
That's all I have.
Hearing, oh, no other discussion, all in favor, say aye, Kevin.
Aye.
Aye, can the aye.
And don't you have two copies of the original?
Yeah, I see them right here. Okay. Just sign it when we're done. Okay, next item, consideration of supplemental budget for Custer County Recycles, this is the building in Baylor. How are you? For resolution number twenty one dash twelve.
Time yet.
Back and forth, huh?
Gray hair sprouting on you, well, must be better over there than what?
Yeah. Hair dye is come a long way. I think your shirt's all I should have. Okay, Brian, why don't you give us a rundown on this?
Well, you can disregard that first page, I didn't put it in the right order. That one will be our last item here today. The first item would be resolution number twenty one twelve. So this is for the recycling building in the Baylor. As, as discussed in our, I believe it was a workshop, talking about what, what needed to be done, how do we need to reallocate monies and, and so here are the resolutions that that we've created from that, so for resolution number twenty one twelve. What, what you're going to see here is the revenue sources, the capital improvement fund. It is not specifically an account that we can pull that money out of, that's set separately from the accounts. It would be what the ending fund balance would have been after everything that was budgeted for this year was expended. Is, is this four hundred and sixty four thousand here?
Not including the one seven.
Not including the one seven, correct.
So this, yeah, is what, everything that's been budgeted is being spent, this is what's not, this is what's allocated yet.
Yes, exactly. Capital.
Well, without the one seventy, truly right now is a projected ending fund balance.
Yes, correct. Yep, and so then, what would happen is there wouldn't actually be a movement of funds, it would just be a, an appropriation of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to the landfill and recycling department's capital outlay account. And then it has the account number there, and then that separates out as eighty thousand dollars for the recycling building and ninety thousand for the Baylor.
So the bottom line is, we had five hundred and somewhat thousand bucks, this, what you're showing us is after the hundred and seventy was spent, that true? Say that one more time. That capital improvement fund in the balance, currently it sits a hundred and seventy more, and you're showing us, no, this is, that's how you, that's how you presented.
This is, this is currently, so the, the four hundred and sixty four thousand, that's the ending fund balance, is if we were to spend everything that is currently budgeted.
All right.
That's what we'd have left.
And this is what we got.
We get definitely one seventy from, from this, okay.
I guess we will take one seventy.
Good.
To make two ninety.
If you look at the next page, it'll, yeah, be two ninety five and sixteen.
Question of my name. This, specifically this recycle grant was three hundred and, let's say, three hundred and eighty thousand, that's not exactly right, but these are the most immediate expenses we're going to incur. If we incur other expenses before the end of the year, we'll have to come back with another supplemental budget request, right?
Most likely, there, there were, I believe, eighty seven thousand dollars in the capital improvement for recycling. I, it was my understanding, I guess, that that was accounted for, that was spoken for somewhere else.
Yeah, but you committed.
Yeah, but it is, it was not spent yet, so this would actually
Be in addition to that.
There would be somewhere around two hundred and fifty three thousand dollars in that capital outlay for landfill and recycling, so I think there's
So it's already eighty thousand, whatever it is, spoken for earmark of this two ninety five, correct?
That's good.
Was that in capital? Improvement?
Yes. Did you?
No, unless it's just under grades. I'm looking at page fifty eight, I did not see it.
Page fifty seven.
Yeah.
Page fifty seven, the final budget for
That's where you saw it, isn't it?
Well, landfill, there it is.
It's included in trapping landfill, not
Landfill. Right, yeah. Yep, so, the landfill line on page fifty seven shows that eighty two, seven, sixty six, that looks like a pickup, a skid steer and well drilling, so so it's likely that, yes, if there was any other large expenses, if those didn't actually get spent, that we would have to do this again.
For high country recycling, it's wrapped into landfill.
And yes, is, yes.
I'm hoping we can change that off eventually.
Yeah, for, for next year, I know Brian has, has talked about wanting to have recycling separate from Ryan's bill altogether, it's a department, so that would be the plan.
Great, bottom line is, you got a margin of two hundred and some thousand, less than, two hundred, what you said here, two hundred and ninety five thousand and eighty seven thousand, over that, eighty seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty six, earmarked already. So if anything came in above that difference from a hundred, whatever it is, then we'd have to
Yeah, yeah, I get a little skittish how much we would want to get into that, because that tends to have a balance, and I don't know what, what history shows as far as what needs to be used out of that, but I would rather, the more we can, you know, of course, having a budget ahead of time and not relying on what a, a fund balance happens to be.
Right, so, but sometimes when you budget, you don't, you know, things don't get spent, or maybe miss mark the budget, just miss guessed, right, study. Okay, looks good to me, I will recommend, and I will, let's see, what do we, did we have a motion yet? So I move that we approve resolution number twenty one dash twelve, resolution incorporating additional sums of money to defray expenses in excess of amounts budgeted for Custer County. And this would be for the earmark for the recycling. The capital outlay account in the landfill and recycling department's account number five dot four zero six zero, six five zero dot five nine one. Move the second into any other discussion?
I did, sir.
Go ahead.
I realize that we don't have a recycling account now, so we're going to go ahead and put this in the landfill, no issue with that. Going, moving forward until we do get a recycling account set up, where I can spend it out of landfill.
Yeah.
I don't mean anything by this question other than face value, have you visited with the auditors about this process or this format, on this form?
No, I haven't. This was based purely on previous reservations. Can you hear, okay, back there, we make sure everybody can, yeah, type up those. Okay, the other discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve resolution number twenty one dash twelve, say aye, Tom?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Can the aye?
And we're signing this copy here, does it matter?
Does it matter to me?
Okay, we'll sign it, okay, hit the next one, because that's part of
All right, next would be resolution number twenty one thirteen, this is for hazard mitigation for increasing that particular account by thirty seven thousand dollars in order to be able to expend money, left, yep. In order to be able to expend money that will be then recouped from a grant that were coming in. The, the revenue had already been budgeted, but for whatever reason, the expense hadn't been budgeted for that. So this, this is a similar thing where this would, the only place that we could find this kind of money was in, in that ending fund balance, so this now shows after the one seventy, that's what would be left, is that two ninety five thousand.
Right, not to thirty seven yet.
Correct, yeah, so the thirty seven would come out of that.
I didn't move to adopt resolution twenty one thirteen. Dealing with the supplemental budget for hazard mitigation of thirty seven thousand.
Second. Okay, then moving and seconded to adopt the resolution number twenty one dash thirty one. Thirteen, thirteen, I mean, sorry, for the hazard mitigation expense account to appropriation for the hazard mitigation expense account in the emergency management department, count number sixty dot four four one one two dot five two 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 three. Any discussion? All in favor, then, say aye, Tom?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Can the, aye.
Right, next one is number twenty one fourteen. This one gets a little bit more complicated, this is for the Justice Center, ten thousand dollars that we were looking for it there. The revenue sources, there's three that, that I'm suggesting that would come from, that the ten thousand would come from, what you're seeing is the balances now of those accounts. And pointing out again, that ending fund balance for the capital improvement fund is now after we've taken out that thirty seven thousand, so that's the ending fund balance at that point. Community outreach and public notices is also where I'm suggesting, the first part after the now therefore be it resolved, that's, that's saying that the capital outlay account would be increased by ten thousand dollars for, in the underfunded courthouse department. And for the Justice Center. The second piece of that is to decrease the budgets of community outreach and public notice by four thousand and one thousand respectively. In order to account for that as well.
And when you say the one thousand out of county commissioners department, you're talking about community.
Community outreach, correct. Yes, correct.
Is that how community outreach looks in your new book, keeping, we don't have this community outreach, or we do?
It shows it as community outreach, but it resides in what you're calling the Custer, the county commissioners department. Yeah, that's the department.
Any discussion?
Motion first, or?
Yeah.
Okay, discuss it.
Any other, no, go ahead and move it.
A move that we adopt resolution number twenty one dash fourteen, dealing with the funds for, for the Justice Center committees.
Second.
And we've been seconded to adopt twenty one dash fourteen as presented. Any other discussion?
I do, sir. So the underfunded courthouse. We're going to cede that with this ten thousand dollars. To cover the Justice Center expenses. The latest grant we had from underfunded court security cash commission was forty thousand with a five thousand dollar match from the county, we haven't expended that money yet. But if and when we do, we could be called upon to come up with a five thousand dollar match for that grant.
No, but that wasn't do this yet. Was this the latest one?
Yes, what I said, the most recent.
I thought we did pay some out of that already.
I said we haven't expended all of that.
All of, you're correct.
If we do, and we still need to kick in five grand, then we're going to probably have to do another supplemental, but it's, I don't anticipate that, well, yeah. It better be spent before the end of the year, come to think of it. That grant was to do the architectural renderings, drawings, and three D mockups of the Justice Center.
Right. And that can still be
And I don't know, this may be a question we need to pursue, if, if we have a grant and we have matched five thousand, I wonder, I'd have to go back and look at that grant, do we have to cough up the five thousand first? And then expend the forty, do we expend the forty, and if we need more, we then match, or I don't know how that works, to be honest with you, I really don't.
I think it's, it sort of sounds familiar, the same as the AWAS grant was, you, you get decremented each time you spend it ten percent. So if, if it costs seventy five hundred bucks, then we have to pay seven fifty, that's how we've been doing things in the past, although we haven't and we have, there's been no structure on this, because nobody at the administrative side of the Justice Center grant, underfunded courts has ever even talked to.
I can reach out to my guests and ask.
Be a good idea.
Work, but I really don't know when that five thousand matters.
Happen on all our other grants, we just spent it all, every master.
Because I'm assuming that there's no excess cash in that underfunded courthouse department, or we wouldn't be doing this.
Correct, yeah, sorry, so we may have to revisit. Was there any money taken for the, from the grant?
I, I would have to check and see what that's
Know what it is, because I must have been.
Yeah.
We paid Nate someone. Or
Yeah, it just can't be used for this justice settlement, right, so.
That's correct, but you're, you were asking if there's any fun left in there. Plus whatever else.
Yeah, we haven't that's something screening near, all of it, I would move to approve resolution twenty one fourteen.
I'll say it. Already been moving, it's like, yeah, it's just extra.
It's a random motion.
Oh, and I said.
Any second.
Okay, sorry, Tom.
Thank you. Oh, yeah.
I did the other question, didn't I? All right, all in favor, say aye, Tom?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Can the aye?
So, we're taking two of five. Taking four out of the outreach.
And then the other five would come out of the capital improvement, but it doesn't require changing any.
Okay. So we're taking, this deals with five thousand.
Right, he just, it gets made the capital fund get well, because he transferred it all nation.
Correct. For twenty one fifteen here, we were going the wrong direction.
Yeah. Yeah, twenty one fifteen should, should be the easiest one here. All this is saying is that for the American Rescue Plan, that we are going to create two accounts, setting the revenue account to be appropriated to, to appropriate the revenue account at four hundred and ninety two thousand, two hundred dollars, and then also creating an expense account to set that at four hundred and ninety two thousand, two hundred dollars as well, so, okay, so then we're going to see something that takes care of the money already, so.
Same thing, right?
The, the money that we've already spent within this.
This, this total amount we got.
Correct. Yeah, this is just saying that we're, we're now saying that the budget has this amount. Yep.
And then when we get our second half payment, we don't have to do this again, right?
Right, because we will budget for it, and for the twenty
If it happens in twenty twenty two, which I think it will.
Yeah.
Anticipated.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll need to remember that day. Yes, you've kind of been the lead on the whole American Rescue Plan, that we will need the budget of revenue of one hundred and ninety two thousand, whatever.
When we have our budget discussions and, and over. Then we'll have to do it again next year.
It's not next month yet. By one day, so in two months.
All right. All right. I move that we adopt the resolution twenty-one dash fifteen. As the fix, American Rescue Plan revenue account, account number ten, set up a new account as the American Rescue Revenue Account. Number one, zero, 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 zero dot three, five, one, one, zero, be created. In a discussion. Yeah, call for the vote on resolution twenty-one fifteen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
Can I?
And as a side note, from our meeting we attended at the Mountain District, I came away feeling like we're probably ahead of our neighboring counties and dealing with this American Rescue Plan.
There we are, by a bunch, and I found out too. I know somebody was asking, who knows, my daughter, as a matter of fact, working with a contractor and truly dead and that, they haven't got anything.
So feel good about that, and this will help, of course, give a piece. The money we've expended so far has come out of.
The, the money that we've spent it so far has we pro tonk the, this particular account.
I would pay sure. We had the money, it was, I just didn't happen to know what account.
To me, it's six, one point half a dozen other, the, the accounts had been created, but they did not.
And they had actual money, so it's not, right.
Yeah, there has not been a resolution to actually create the budget for it though.
Right, right, so.
So it was deposited in a American Rescue Plan account and expended out of that same account.
Correct.
And we'll continue.
Now we did was make the count, make it official real.
Okay, just a little quick side note on that is our reporting is due today. It has been attempted, been reported for two or three days now and with no success, so I know Tina's had been working on that.
Say that again.
Tina is unable to submit our report that is due today due to, it appears errors on their site in the, in the website. And she has been working on that, trying to get that in.
Good. Okay, anything else? Now you got another one.
Yeah, I've got another one. Last thing would be for amending the personnel policy. I, I wasn't quite sure what all we were hoping to, to do here, what, what we needed as far as the policy manual itself is concerned. This is the only thing that I believe needs changed at this point in time.
To date.
Yeah, prior, prior to a full on.
A discussion.
Full on, yes, revision, yeah. So it actually doesn't mention anything in the policy currently about insurance and when that actually takes place. So given, given the way that is written, I would, I would suggest that we keep it the way it is. And then be more detailed, knowing that in the new policy that there would be detail of this is when you're going to be eligible for insurance. For, for the retirement side of that, it does say it's mandatory for all eligible employees after six months of employment. My suggestion, I meant to print this in color, but the darker gray there is striking after six months of employment and then adding instead upon start date as, as we wrote it before, so.
Yeah, it looks so.
Why was insurance not?
You wouldn't wait to make it effective, having somebody sit around for six months.
Yeah, who knows why that was in there.
Maybe back in the old days, the boys came and went.
Now the insurance does start upon hire, correct? Or is it after six months?
It's the first day of the month following.
After this vote, go right there.
How, after this vote, well, after the last vote, this is adding it to the.
They're setting, that's, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, we already did vote, right, do that.
Yeah, that is in progress.
A change in the product, the policy that reflects.
Correct.
And I see where you've got that in there now. Sorry about that.
So you're striking the six months, so I move that we amend the, the personnel policy, chapter nine, discussing benefits, specifically nine, zero, three, retirement and the striking after six months of employment to be changed to upon start date.
Second.
We also need to have the nine point one in there as well, because that addresses the is that, that's a change, I believe, correct? On nine one for the start date of the insurance.
You just copy it out of it.
After our previous vote.
Oh, and I'm sorry.
Okay, on the, on the.
Actual policy.
First day of the following month after hire for the insurance.
And whether.
Is that a change from previous?
Yes, yes, it is.
Yeah, that, that was my question, should that motion include that as well? Because you pointed out nine oh three.
Yeah, all, all it says is nine oh three, nine point one added to nine oh one.
Nine oh one is also a, a change that we made on our previous vote that is being addressed here.
There, okay. Yep, I missed, missed it saying that in nine oh one. Says all other benefits except for retirement will begin on the first of the month following employees thirty calendar days on the job.
So that whole thing is good.
Yeah, you need to, we could.
Or just take out retirement. No.
We could strike the entire sentence. Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't matter because it's state retirement below. So want to amend the motion here.
Somebody have a record of it.
Why, we can handle one motion with both. Changes in nine oh one and nine oh three. I don't care which way.
Yeah.
Just vote on the motion, then we'll make another motion, it takes a change in the motion anyway. So it's been moved and seconded to amend nine oh three retirement from chapter nine benefit section of our personnel policy. All in favor of the change, say aye, Tom.
I will vote aye, and I want to just throw in a quick thing upon start date and then are we scratching of employment? We've been raised the words of employment in the policy. It's not on your document, but it's, I'm looking at the policy.
I, I think that when it says for all eligible employees upon start date. I would assume.
I will vote, I vote yes.
Kevin, all right, can I? Oh. He voted, yes.
Okay, so then the, the second suggestion, and having read this better, would be to strike everything under nine oh one after twenty-four hours per week to qualify, because the rest of that would be.
So holidays.
Yeah. Because it's really shouldn't be mentioned there anyway, but there, there's no reason to delineate certain benefits over other benefits, because now it's all going to be equal.
Yeah. Right. Got a motion?
Beforehand, so that, so I would just read just the first two sentences.
Correct.
The county offers full range of benefits to eligible employees. An eligible employee must work a minimum of twenty-four hours per week to qualify.
Correct.
I move that we adopt that change in section nine oh one for eligibility in the employee handbook.
And that change being?
That change being, the county currently offers a full range of benefits to eligible employees. An eligible employee must work a minimum of twenty-four hours per week to qualify. End of section.
So we're not changing that, though, that stays. My point is, I think we better articulate what we're striking.
Striking everything after the first two sentences.
My motion will be that we strike everything after twenty-four hours per week to qualify in that section.
Including the very last sentence, retirement, do you have that? Retirement deduction and match.
And that we, that's, we've already gotten rid of that.
Okay, and the discussion. All in favor, say aye, Tom.
Do you have a second?
I don't have one wrote down, but I thought I might have missed it.
I'll second it. They all in favor, say aye, Tom. Chapter, Tom, or Kevin.
Aye.
Can I?
And a copy of this personnel change be sent to our managers. So that, that would be my next question. To, to use another Latin term, ceteris paribus, all things being equal, can we just wait until? Get this other one done.
And it's, it's not just to the county or to the department heads.
And people. Because truly these, if this were something. I, I think with these two being mainly internal processes within my department, I, I feel okay with waiting to get it out in the new, in a new policy. As opposed to something that directly, you know, somebody would, would need to know this is going to be what I tell them when they come in for onboarding anyway. So, but either way, if we, if we'd like to get that out now and, and get that reposted on a, on the website and sent to everyone, can be done.
Yeah, I think the other option would be to just send out a an email highlighting these two changes specifically, but.
I was going to say, can you just send out that?
Correct the page, this is a correction to the policy change three, please replace page thirty-eight in your policies at home.
But you might post it on the website too, just in case somebody that's interested in applying.
And it really doesn't affect anybody that's going to receive this.
Yeah.
No, but if the word gets out, we change personnel policy.
That's why my point is, they're not going to have to do anything.
We'll be feeling questions about that, so.
It's a good thing that.
In my copy of the personnel policy, I'm making these changes, I made a note that we voted on today. I think it'd be wise maybe to just send out a countywide, because it needs to go to all employees, not just department heads.
That's right. That's what they do in a lot of official documents, they, there's a term for the correction that you enter to insert into the documents. Probably a little Latin.
Re-educate our attorney, Mr. Fancy.
Ceteris paribus.
Yeah, he probably knew that, but.
Deminus non curat lex.
I'm glad I'm not the one that said that, but we're going to have to start writing all these phrases down. Good, so that gets us up to speed on where we're at.
Correct.
What do you think for a time to deal with this personnel policy?
As, as soon as the budget is stamped and ready to go, then, so I'm, I'm going to say end of October, ready, to be ready for implementation beginning of next year.
Ten, how frightening is this upcoming budget in your office? That's going to cover it.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I'm not sure I can put a number to it. Well, no, it, it'll be, it, it should be fine. The, the scarier part of it is just trying to get the system of accounts, the chart of accounts redone.
Have you reached out to department heads to get their to let them know they need to start working on their budget proposals?
I have let everybody know what we were, so originally in that, in the meetings with department heads, what we had talked about based on our, our meeting together was having that workshop at the end of the month to go over the process and whether or not that process was going to stay the same. So I've let everybody know that, now that we've kind of pushed that out, I know everybody's sweating a little bit more.
Yeah. Comment to me, and do we have that date formed up?
Fifteenth, I believe.
That we're going to meet.
For the workshop.
And then we have an idea about the deadline for people to get their proposed budgets to you.
With, depending on how that meeting goes. Yeah, right, right now, it's because, exactly, the fourteen.
We're going to get thirty days.
I think the, the one saving grace in talking about that with everyone is my plan is to give them an initial budget as opposed to them giving me an initial budget.
Cool.
And so then they can, to me, that eliminates a step. And then they can come back and say, well, no, we need these, these, this looks good, but these three things we need to do.
Yeah. Believe that was. Come at you, remember it's world.
Yeah, so I think. I think it'll be a lot of work in one-on-one with department heads.
Okay, say, say it again, workshop for the proposal with troops is the fifteenth September.
Yes.
And our budget workshop, this is for the record, is starting October, what is the date, the twelfth?
October twelve.
Yeah. Coming up, yes, it is.
And that's for all of us.
What does that look like?
B O C C finance meetings, I didn't know that.
I don't think we should be.
I don't know, I'm just saying, I wasn't aware of that. I could have been.
That will be okay, because I have.
Yeah.
Yes.
Get you guys, okay?
I thought that's what we talked about, it's going to be the four or five or six of us.
More us discussing what that is. But that's the way I understood it.
I mean, we're going to have to turn that whole process around in a week, probably, because we got to give department head time to react to whatever we decide.
Do we need to, I know we kicked that on because it was a meeting day anyway, do we need to move that up earlier in the month?
About that, but.
As we can.
Whatever we do, we'll be doing the department head's a huge favor, I think.
Yeah, I think. That's a month between, we all have plenty of time.
Yeah, we usually have it like noon.
So I'd be good the sixth.
So right now I have the third, I have the fourth, the fifth.
Fourth and fifth is Saturday and Sunday.
Okay, so I have, no wonder there's nothing. Through the big, the big deals and stuff like that, so.
Fourteen, fourteen. Not going to gain as much, but yeah.
Just keep on thirteen, fourteen, those are dates that we're holding tentatively for the. Just keep on thirteen, fourteen, those are dates that we're holding tentatively for the American Rescue.
There's Thursday the ninth.
No. I've got three meetings that day.
Yeah.
We see what's, the afternoon of the seventh.
Well, I, we're probably okay to leave it if Brayden's office is prepared to say, okay. By the following Monday or Tuesday, maybe. We gotta get stuff to our department head.
Short, short of. If the process as up presented sounds okay, I will start doing the footwork on that and then it'll be just. Yeah, and I, I think that's fair enough, yeah.
So should we?
Leave it on.
Should we send them out something telling them that we're changing the process a little this year? We're submitting the initial budget to them rather than the other way around.
Yeah, I, I can do that, I've, I've started priming everybody for that. Heck, it's not that I'm not out of whack, because that's what Donna used to do anyway, to put it together. But we were, we weren't involved in the behind the scenes she did with the departments before that.
Yeah, I don't think she gave them a number, I think they gave her a number.
Well, they gave it to her. But then changed, but she had already proposal, that's right.
I think we're okay, we just, we're gonna go almost day to day, be fair.
It's just gonna be a little more upfront about it. Thank you. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. I don't think everybody can hear that.
Your, uh, former rag teacher would like to, you know.
My former rag teacher wanted to take me out to lunch.
I will make that happen, my friend, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on, in addition, we got, uh, what, twenty minutes to twelve, so not take up too much time. Any additional items of business?
Do not have any.
I'll take, so I'll, uh, circle back around with, uh, Daniel, channel thirteen.
I panicked because that is a big old weekend that we're looking at, I thought, I want to make sure we didn't.
Skip something.
Yeah, and I'll, we'll get that flag hung up.
Did you say you had something you wanted to bring up?
Public comment.
Okay.
Public comment, anybody have any other items they want to bring up? Anybody online? No. Okay, I have a, a statement I want to make, this is Bill Canada, public comment, uh. I am a commissioner, but this is from, coming from Canada, as a citizen of this county. I'm mad, I'm upset, I'm incensed, I'm disappointed. I had a friend of mine come into our church this last Sunday. And he asked me, he says, Bill, and he hasn't, doesn't see me around, it's a family that comes up business once in a while and they have property up there. He looked at me, he says, Bill, are you okay? And I said, what? He says, you, you don't look good, and it made me start thinking about it, I, I am tired. I'm tired of our. Freedom, our constitution being tread on, our, our values, our rights. Uh, that were given to us and, and it, and I looked at myself and I get twisted every time I think, and I'm saying this with you all. Because you all, I know, feel the same way. I don't doubt it for a second, doesn't matter what party you are, it doesn't matter what. Where you live. It, it's got to affect, it affects me, maybe I'm even more affected because in fact I've lived. I have spent a thirty years of holding the constitution of the United States before I swore an oath to the constitution to be a commissioner. We can't afford to sit around and watch and wait for somebody else to do it, somebody has to stand tall. And call on our leadership when they're wrong, and that means the military, it means the Congress, it means the President of the United States. That's what we are sworn to uphold. It's a state, might be. Because without the rule of law, without, uh, defending the constitution and not being afraid of being called an anarchist. For saying that, that you defend the constitution, that you, you want to hold to the values and the rights and the freedoms that we cherish. I grew up as a son of a, the greatest generation era, so that's not very many, many of the greatest generation around. And I know you're all a product of the same thing. And they instilled in me a sense of pride in the country, and well, I think we're losing it with the young people. I cared about the flag and I picked the flag up and, and if it would hit the ground, if it was even a small one, because that's what they, we never let old glory hit the ground. That flag is more than representing, uh, a representative, it, it holds the souls and lives of many, many hundreds and thousands of people. That gave their lives and their service to this country throughout time. I get a chill every time I look at the flag, I, I wore the pledge of allegiance today specifically. And I wanted to say the pledge because it matters. And so I, it's delivered, I, and when I was commissioned into the air force as an officer. Thirty, forty years ago, whatever it's been, I had a chill run down my backbone every time I had to salute the flag and listen to the national anthem. And I get it always today. Uh, I'm tired of having our, our rights eroded and I saw it gradually hit me as we started losing jobs. When we got rid of the pipeline that happened, this economic issues, to turn us into a country that's dependent upon the enemy. That's we're gonna buy, buy oil from to go buy weapons to shoot at us. It didn't make sense, and maybe you kind of blow it off, well, maybe we'll fix that and it'll come around later, who's gonna make it turn? And then I got upset again when the border, they lined up one million people on the border. And if it were Chinese and they walked across the border, wouldn't that be an invasion? Wouldn't that be something that we'd worry about and where, where are those people going and who's taken care of? If it were Chinese, we'd be down there with our guns and shooting at them to get rid of, but we've opened the border up, not only to just immigrants. But to now, the, the other thing that hit me is they turned loose the Taliban, uh, people that were in jail. In Afghanistan and they're free to come back and enter this county, this, uh, this country, in this county. The reason we were there in Afghanistan and, and in World War Two in Germany and in Japan. Wasn't, wasn't because defense doesn't mean come to your border, we're gonna retrieve, retract. Uh, and sit in our border and wait for somebody to come across. It's making sure we tend to our business strategically overseas where we cannot allow terrorism to grow. And hit us again like it did nine eleven, that's the only reason we're there, it's not to make Afghanistan a better country, but guess what? In the fact that we were there for twenty years, we turned a generation of people around that believed in that and got more freedom because of that. Now, just to maintain a presence like we did in Japan and in Germany and other countries would help. Guarantee that as well as give us positioning to be strategically positioned for an attack from somewhere else, we gave that up, look what happened. We left Afghanistan. And we left Americans there. We left our allies there, I, I had the same thing happen to me, uh, in my professional life, I had a. An interpreter that we sponsored and he's now working for our son in Fort Collins, that was, uh, glad to be here. And, and so were all the other people that worked with, how many thousands and millions of people did we, uh, lives did we affect? Guess what, we left millions and billions of dollars of equipment, do you know what this is? This is a Black Hawk helicopter flying recently, hanging one of the, in, uh, people that worked with the United States of America. That's, that is real, it's not made up. So, it's gotten to the point where in order to not continue to roll over and take it on the chin. And say, somebody else will do it, it starts with us, our families here in this valley. We are lucky to be able to be where we are, we want to protect it and keep it this way. And if we don't stand up, and just like this redistricting meeting and making sure our voices are heard and standing up wherever we can to be an example. And, and support those people, they're all volunteers, it's not, uh, we're not forcing anybody to go shoot at anybody. We're, we're asking them to defend this country and if you feel the need to serve your country, you got a lot of ways to do it. A lot of ways, the military is one and a lot of others, we need to keep that alive in our next generation of kids that are coming along. Out of this county, because the counties grow, so goes the state. So I would like personally, this is Bill Canada, it's not a county, board of county commissioner, challenge or anything. I will work with, with several people, we've got a lot of military here and, and that can help. As well as first responders that can help, I think it's time to come up with a resolution and I'm, maybe there's some counties that already have done it. That would demand accountability from the President of this United States, and I think he should be fired personally. I think he's, it's been treasonous, some of the things that has occurred on, uh, under his watch. Nowhere in history would you ever pull the United States forces out and tell the civilians, uh, the Americans or the people are. Out first, just boggles my mind that it happened, and it did. And then they said they weren't gonna leave them and they did, how, how are we gonna not see again, not only hangings like this? These are gonna be Americans hanging from those helicopters and held, uh, as ransom for another demand to have us go do something else. You watch, i- it, it's happened before and it took twenty years to do it and all we needed to do is just keep the force there. And keep the, our eyes on it, it's not building the country, not spending billions of dollars, we already did that. So, um, I'm very emotional about it. Because I gave my own life and my family's life to, to live a life where we had to go all over the world. I, I visited with these people, the, the people that you're, I had a, uh, a secure phone under the bed in my bedroom. Direct line to the Secretary of the Air Force, uh, during nine eleven, and because we, they work. Every commander and I was a wing commander of a combat support agency at the time. And made life and death decisions that affected not only the lives of the people that work for me, but our families. And it is hard and you gotta stand tall and you gotta trust the structure and the fact that we are defending the country for good reasons. And when we don't, you've gotta call people into account of, or not doing it right. So, um, I would like to see us as a county adopt a resolution that would demand the resignation of that president. I would like us to hold the accountability of the, uh, leadership that has gone along, for whatever the reasons are, giving him the advice. And maybe, maybe it's even worse than that, maybe that president is not accountable, able. Uh, maybe the twenty fifth amendment is, applies, I don't, I'm not gonna, that, I don't know. But I do know that if we don't do something, who else is gonna do it? And so, and, and that's why I need, recommend as a citizen here, all of us to be working on something like that. And with some input and something that matters at a state level and if, and like, and maybe it gets forwarded to the President of the United States. Or the Congress or whatever, we, there's needs to be something, otherwise a piece of me dies every time a piece of this country. Heels up a freedom, think about what your parents would think right now if they saw what's happening just now. And little things like ankle bracelets because of COVID for kids to wear, you know, how, how far do we go, where, where do we stop? Uh, it's like nineteen eighty four all. All over every time we see another one go, so, uh, I want to stand tall on the constitution. And I know you all at some level do and I'm, and I don't wanna, and I'm not afraid to, uh, it's not anarchy, it's called patriotism. It's called protecting our freedoms for that next generation, that's what I wanted to say, I wanted to get off my chest because I'll tell you. Gut wrenching, I don't even want to watch the news, we're lucky we're here, but boy, you hide your head in the sand. Then you come out of it and there's no, no country around you, uh, what value is that? Um, anyway, I wanted to say that for the record, just for Canada, the citizen, and, and I want to thank you guys for being part of the team that. Already, we have made a lot of statements as a county that cares in a lot of ways. Already in our term, Tom and I, I've been the ones that care the longest. Uh, and I know that some of the commissioners in the past have done similar things and I really appreciate your help and your understanding. Thanks, that's what I wanted to say. And I'll entertain anybody else's suggestion. That's all I have, anything to, uh. Alright, I'll second it, then moving to second adjourned, meeting over, thank you.